Like to call the meeting to order Monday, June 2nd Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission Meeting. Like to go to Article Two Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, Article Three, approve the current agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Four, disclose any conflict of interest. Any conflict of interest?
Done.
Article Five, approve the minutes of the May nineteenth twenty twenty five meeting.
Oh, second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Six, acknowledging visitors and those wishing to speak. If you're here for the Article Seven, which is the Whitneyville Avenue accessory building, will give you time to speak for that. That's the only public hearing. So if you're here for one of the others or anything else, welcome to come up and see your piece. He could do it. He could do it during his though too, because we probably bring him or we can. How do you want to do it? Yeah. No, if you, if you want to talk about five, five, four, we'll give you, we have a public hearing for that. If you want to talk about something else. Um, I, I, I prefer to have Mr. McGovern do it during that, if that's okay.
On one of the other two, which is the thirty sixth street.
Yeah.
Um, or the other one. If you're the applicant or a representative from the applicant, then you, you'll have an opportunity to speak then. If you want to speak on that as a citizen, then that would be the time to speak on it. Whitneyville, we will have the formal public hearing on that.
So then you can get up, yeah. I know it's a little confusing. Okay, um, so no, anybody online? Okay. All right. So Article Seven, case number twenty five, three, eight, nine, one.
This, this, this item is five, four, four, one, Whitneyville. As you see from the staff report, this one should be pretty procedural. I, I do want to note kind of before I go into the staff review that this was something that came to the planning department in September of twenty twenty four. And reading through the ordinance, there was some discrepancies in staff interpretation of whether this was administrative or the planning commission should approve it through special use. So it is coming to you as a special use now, but the, the applicant was advised that this would be appropriate per this section administratively. So you'll see in the staff review that I recommend approval. Now, I already want to just note that there was conversation with the applicant in the, in the past about this site. So, uh, section seventeen oh three, one B of the zoning ordinance allows for an accessory structure to be placed in the, the front yard by special use in certain conditions. And unlike some, you know, a variance where you have to meet all of the standards, this section reads that you can be approved if any of the following conditions apply. So I put the three different conditions in your staff packet on page three of the staff packet. A line which a top, or a lot in which a topography of the property makes it impossible to construct the building in the rear or side or extensive grading or treatment removal is required, which would significantly change the landscape and view of the neighborhood. Or if required, the required location, if required to locate the building in the rear or side yard. The other standard is a lot which the property owner would have to drive over a drain septic field or a lot in which the accessory building is set back a minimum of two hundred feet. So those are all reasons, any given reason would allow for the planning commission to approve this accessory structure in the front yard. The subject accessory structure is located on the north. Um, I'm sorry, the southwest side of the property and it's an existing structure. The proposed building, uh, the proposed primary building would actually put the structure in the front yard. It's up. There's one more. I haven't.
So it's my understanding, just to refresh my memory, that this is a pre-existing building. They are tearing down the house and a pre-existing building that is not in the front yard. They're tearing down the house and moving the house and doing that. The pre-existing building is now in the front yard.
Correct. That's correct. So as you can see from the survey of, uh, this, this site is a large site. It's a ten acre site um, with, with, um, rolling hills and a river. There's not a lot of opportunity to split it. There is some unique features about this property that the, that the property owner would be maintaining. So I do recommend approval. Um, this is a special use of, so we can hold a public hearing and staff or planning, uh, commission is welcome to ask staff or the applicant any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for staff? No. Would the applicant like to come up and speak? Just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Uh, this address? Uh, my name's Kendra Locker and it is five, five, forty, Whitneyville. Um, and I just want to say me and, uh, my husband and my young family are going to be moving here and we're really excited to join the neighborhood and the township. The house that currently sits on it, my neighbor Rudy, his mom and dad built, uh, in the fifties. So we're already part of the neighborhood and and, uh, getting along with all the neighbors and the neighborly, uh, vibe that's going on there. Um, when they originally built the house, obviously the house sits really close to Whitneyville Road. As we all know, uh, Whitneyville has changed a lot since the construction of the house, I believe in the fifties. Um, so because we have a small family and we have a dog, we just like, would like to move the house back. Uh, that brings up an issue with the barn, which sits a little closer to the road on the side. Um, but we are going to paint the barn the same color as our house, really try to make uh, the barn, the existing, the existing structure, uh, kind of fit into more of the design criteria that we would like our house to be. So it kind of vibes a little bit better. And, uh, but it, we just really like the fact that the barn's perfectly fine structurally. There's nothing wrong with it. The roof looks great. Uh, everything on the inside is really great and we just think it would be a shame to tear down something that's perfectly fine if we're going to be fixing it up and making it look a little bit more like our house. So thanks.
Where'd you move from?
Uh, right now, we actually live, no, you're right. Right now we live, uh, in the Heritage Hill area just outside in Grand Rapids. So six, one, seven fountain.
Welcome to Cascade.
Thank you. Yeah.
So my question, you're tearing down the other structures in the house and all of that stuff.
It's just, yes, it's a house, a garage that sits apart from the house and then there's like a pergola, pavilla, something like that. Um, and that, that's coming down as well. So it's really just the, the barn that were, that we'd like to keep. So, yeah.
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to?
So I'm, I'm the builder for the project.
Okay. Get your name and just an address.
Matt Cracker. I live at eighteen oh nine Edgewood Avenue, Grand Rapids. She summed that up pretty well. Right now the fire department is using the, the existing house as like a training thing. Uh, that thing, even when we walked in, it was like not super safe. So that thing's getting demoed regardless, but I didn't know if you had any questions for me either.
I don't.
I don't.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Is anybody else have any comments or? Okay, motion, yeah, I motion to go to public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, uh, public hearing. Uh, is there anybody in the audience that wants to come up and speak on this? Anybody? Good. Nobody on Zoom?
I should know. We, we noticed this and there was no complaints. One, one neighbor called, just asking what was going on, but there was no complaints.
Saw that. Okay.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
All right.
Second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay. I mean, I don't have a problem with this at all. I mean, I think, I think the saving grace is pre-existing. Right? I mean, that's.
And I'm happy they're keeping all the trees in the backside of their building and not cutting them down to put a new barn in the back. The only thing that I would like to see in the conditions to add to this is that the, um, other outbuildings are being taken down as well, just so we don't have more than just one accessory building in the front yard. But there are the rest of them and the houses being taken down. That's the only thing I'd like to see in the record.
Yeah, I, I like the fact that she's coming to us before she's doing construction, doing it the proper way. So that's, so thank you. Um, I don't, anybody have any?
I'd make a comment. I just, since we're in the ordinance revision process, I would know it. It'd be nice to have a pre-existing structure exception.
It's on my list. I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
You don't have anything that really addresses this.
Right, exactly. So, yeah, it'd be nice if it just was like, oh yeah, it
falls under this pre-existing structure, uh, exception, but I, I think it's easy to say that it meets that, that first criteria. That if they have to knock this down and cut down trees and do stuff that, um, we could easily find that it would significantly change the landscape and views of the neighbors to require them to do something different. So, uh, I, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Motion to approve case five thirty eight annual for type one special use for residential accessory structure located in the front yard at fifty five forty Whitneyville Avenue Southeast. For the reasons listed in the, in the packet. Um, the following conditions listed in the packet and adding to the two that are there about the no home occupation and outdoor lighting also add that the other buildings that will be in the front yard once the house is put in the back.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Welcome to Cascade. All right, you went. Article Eight, uh, case number twenty five, three, eight, eight, six. Address five, four, four, one, thirty sixth street, uh, modification to previously approved warehouse addition.
I will not, um, go through the whole entire, uh, the history of this property because I did add it in the staff review, but there has been a few years of, of some back and forth with this property owner, starting in twenty twenty moving into an additional approval in twenty twenty four. Um, I, I actually meant to send the planning commission the grading easement today and I, it slipped my mind, but I want to be clear when I talk about the, the documents that were not, um, were approved as part of the original approval for this site and were not included was actually an application. In the application, it was a survey that included a temporary grading easement on the neighbor's property to the east. So they were proposing originally to add fill to the neighbor's property, um, and never got permission from the neighbor. So this has become kind of this back and forth between the neighbor and us and the applicant and the applicant comes back to us with something and then doesn't exactly do what they said they were going to do. So this all kind of culminated in the end of twenty twenty four where the applicant brought to the planning commission an approved plan that met all of the standards and that the neighbor was at least, you know, satisfied with and it met the standards of our zoning ordinance. And then again, this spring, um, I got a call from the neighbor that there was an accessory or that the, um, retaining wall was again in construction. That's all included in your packet. And I went right to the, actually Ryan and I went on site and talked to the builder who removed the, um, the footings of the retaining wall that were starting to go in a foot from the property line. And then they, the builder came in, applied, sorry, the engineer came and applied for essentially the same plan that was originally, um, rejected by the planning commission in September, in September of twenty twenty. We're back to them requesting exactly what the planning commission said they didn't want to see. And then that is, you'll have a chance to speak. So, um, that is the gist of this, uh, planning commission. Be willing to take any questions?
Yeah, I just want to refresh my memory because it's, you know, it's been a minute. So, um, this is the applicant that didn't get the permit from Grand Rapids and started construction. And when we found out that they didn't get the permit, we gave them a cease and desist on a Friday. And then on Saturday and Sunday, they ignored the cease and desist and erected the building. And their excuse was that they had contractors in town. Right? And then they weren't going to encroach upon Mr. McGovern's property and yet we've seen pictures of fencing on their property and the wall is not in the place where we originally approved it is. I just want to make sure I, I didn't miss anything and I've, I've got it. Okay, is this the same? I, I, I wasn't sure if they fired the original contractor. Is this the same contractor? Do you know? Are you?
From what I understand, they, they did terminate their relationship with Ryan and Rory, who was the original applicant and contractor.
So we've got two contractors that don't want to follow the rules. Okay, that's interesting. All right.
If it's the contractor or the owner.
I, that's a good question.
We'll ask.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
So, yeah, I wasn't involved in any of these previous approvals or denials. There are existing approved plan, is that right?
That's correct.
And then those have the setback at seven foot nine?
That's, that's correct.
And those were just from September of twenty twenty four.
And then there, the cease and desist was issued because?
There's been two of them. The first one was issued because.
I don't think they got a building permit.
Right.
Before commencing construction from the building part.
And well, and they didn't get the permit because they didn't get a permit from Grand Rapids town, the city of Grand Rapids for something, I thought. And so.
Their permit was issued. But, yeah, their building permit was issued in twenty twenty three. So this would have been, I think the first time this came to planning commission was in twenty twenty three. It was issued. And then in twenty twenty four, it was right around the time that I started, I think. So we started working on it. We had to issue the cease and desist because the building permit was issued under the premise that they had recorded a grading easement with ten counties.
That's right. Yep.
Didn't have that grading easement. And then they went through and graded the property into the neighbor's property. Like graded their property and then graded it down to the neighbor's property.
And then was there?
That's when I think the cease, the first cease and desist. And then the second one was issued.
We didn't have to issue a cease and desist. It was a verbal, um, site visit and we, we came. And because we didn't, we just didn't have to, we actually called about on the enforcement, recorded it as an enforcement issue and they straightened it up.
But we did issue a cease and desist where they then, the next day, that day built a defied the cease and desist and built a, built the framing of the warehouse, right? Okay, just wanted to make sure I, I had it correct.
All right. So at some point they actually built something closer to the property line than was approved.
That's correct. They, they've actually started grading on their neighbor's property.
And built a wall, I think one foot off the property line and it was supposed to be eight feet. Yeah.
They proposed a wall that was one foot and we said that doesn't work because at this point you've burnt your bridges with your neighbor and your neighbor doesn't want you working on your property. So even though a retaining wall can be approved by the township at the property line or one foot away from the property line because the neighbor failed to gain approval from the neighbor, I'm sorry, because the applicant failed to gain approval from the neighbor, the township won't approve something if they can't get an easement to work. There's no possible way to build something on someone's property line without encroaching onto that neighbor's property. And the neighbor has made it very clear that they have no interest um, in allowing the applicant on their property, given the history.
And then, um, despite the, all these troubles that have us here today, the present application before us is just to change some materials?
No, to revise our approval to allow them to put it a foot off the property line. Yeah, after they've already built it.
Oh, they're asking it to go back with them?
No, we built it. And now they want to come back and say, oh, wait a minute. We know we're supposed to build it at seven feet, nine inches. We built it at one foot. We want to change that to one foot. So we don't have to.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was trying to, to verify the measurements in these plans and kind of wanted to reconcile with what had been previously approved. Okay, so they, they are proposing to?
Amend what was approved.
Yep, to build one foot off of the property line.
All right.
So just, just to clarify, the application says we'd like to replace the approved, um, concrete retaining wall with this arched tile landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. Is, is it your position that the retaining wall was not approved originally?
The retaining wall was approved at seven point nine feet off of a property line with landscaping.
Not one.
In between.
Yes.
I'll, I'll be honest, guys, this is I'm gonna reserve my wrath until I hear from you, but I'm pissed. So if we'd like to hear, any other, any other questions from staff?
That, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, the applicant like to come up and?
Sure.
Some of that was a bit confusing. I'm Joe Danberg from JVB Architects. Basically, this is a proposal. I thought it'd be a win-win for everybody here. It's a proposal to if I could pass these out, it'd be easier. That's all right. I'm not sure if I have enough.
That's pretty much what we're proposing.
Sure, sure. At one foot off the property line.
Yes, and I'll explain where that one foot comes. If you go through this and you go to.
Sorry, did you? Have you seen this?
Have you, have you given a copy of this?
Can you give them a copy?
Sure.
No offense, but if, if he, if he says, I love this and this is what I'd love to see, then maybe different way because this would be an agreement between neighbors, but if not seeing it, it's not very helpful.
If you look at the, uh, the detail, I guess it would be the third page of the proposed concrete retaining wall. The dimension seven foot nine didn't just come arbitrarily. Okay, we decided to start at one foot, start the construction, digging one foot inside the, our property line. Then we had to figure out the foundation for this eight foot high retaining wall. And then we had to finger or figure out the angle of repose. So one came in while we were doing it. So that's where the seven foot nine came in. If we could have built it or proposed it closer, we would have. Okay, so seven foot nine was an arbitrary. It wasn't. It didn't come out of thin air or anything. It was calculated out and that's where it ended up. Now, part of the problem that Mr. McGovern had was drainage. He was concerned that the stormwater would uh, on our property, seven foot nine would rush down and wash out his electrical or whatever. Which is not going to happen because it all slopes that way anyway. And he had a problem with the buffer zone. You know, and not having a landscape. So we sat and we thought about it and it's brought to our attention that this verti block, you can build it without disturbing the neighbor's property that close.
Okay, besides the fences that are on his property.
The fence was on this property. It was a construction fence. It was there for just slid aside for a day. So, and I'm like going, okay.
I know, I'm just saying like, listen, listen, again, I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, but I look at it and I go seven foot nine inches and they built it a foot off the property.
I'm, I'm going to address that.
Either somebody does not know how to read a tape measure, somebody does not know how to read a plan, or somebody says F the township. We're going to build this for you.
We didn't say F the township or anything like that. And, uh, the contractor who's done a great job fixing this thing and everything and making it conform and you haven't had any other problems. Uh, came to the township to get the verti block approved, approved. Okay, and it, the material, the, the actual blocks, okay? Uh, instead of the concrete wall that's ugly as, you know, whatever. So it got approved.
Better than not.
Well, the, the, right now we're just talking about the material. Okay. Now, when it started to get built, okay? Whether I said it or who knows what, I didn't know I have to be readjusted. I thought it'd be a minor change to an approved site plan.
So can I, can I ask a question before you go any further? So I'm following you. I think what you're saying to us is if you built a concrete wall, you picked the seven foot eight inches, seven foot nine inches because of the footings and stuff that needs to be put in, in the ground from the property line.
Yes.
To erect the wall
Correct.
on your property, using all the footings are still within your property.
Correct.
But because you're choosing a different material.
Correct.
This can be put wherever it is put. It does not need to go on to seven feet of footings before you put this down.
Correct.
And why was the wall poured?
The wall. It wasn't, there wasn't a wall poured.
There's something poured.
It was the blocks being put down.
So you guys put the blocks down?
They put maybe ten blocks down. Well, I, I, it's where we were going to start digging for the foundation.
Start putting the foundation of the concrete wall that they needed to do. I'm following along now. I get, I get the confusion on your part. I also understand how it sounds. It sounds.
It sounds bad, but it's, we're just trying to be a win-win as far as I'm concerned for everybody.
So these concrete blocks, you can, you don't have to touch his property to put them down. You can use a little crane thing and set them down and not go on his property.
Yep.
Did you ask the applicant at all if he'd be okay with this? Instead of?
It's an approved use and, and you know, we're allowed to go on the property line. I didn't think it would be required.
Well, that, but we, but we approved the retaining wall.
Well, yeah, that's when, that's when.
Doesn't matter. If you change it, you can't just start building. You have to come back.
I understand what you're saying and I, I get where you're coming from, but I also understand there's.
And this project has a history of going off.
But you're going back to the previous contractor.
Right, but somebody over here said they have the ability to put a retaining wall of the new property line. That's what somebody over here just said to us. So if I am the person who owns this property and I think it's my property right, if I don't have to encroach on his property and I can use a crane and drop these block things without touching his property, uh, my understanding, this is a, a prop, a right of the property owners, correct?
Yes.
They don't have to come back to us for adjustment.
Based on this image from from the last time that I was on site, they, it wasn't possible to do it because you can see that they have fencing and missing materials and they have all these other things.
That's where they should have gotten with their neighbors and had a great.
That's what I'm saying, like this, this, like, you guys, I'm, I'm, I'm just upset because it's, this is a pattern here, right? This is three times, right? This is three strikes and you're out, right? Like, like if you, if you, hold on, I'm talking. You can speak when I'm done. You didn't, if you'd have come to the neighbor and said, listen, I know we've had some bad blood. We've got an alternative. Would you be willing to look at it? And then you and Mr. McGovern come in or Mr. McGovern sends an email saying, hey, we talked to these guys. We're totally okay with this. But it's like you guys are, are cowboy-ing it. You just do, and it's, and it's not just this. It's, the thing is you have this project, this site has a history. You guys should be treading lightly and instead you're just bowling a china shop like it, nothing's changed.
Well, yes, it has. First off, you're talking about the old contractor with all the problems. Okay, this time we thought that we could change it and go where we started the construction on it and everything. And usually in construction, I've been doing this for forty years, it would be a major change to an approved site plan. Didn't think it'd be a big problem. Okay, then I read in the zoning.
With all the past history, you didn't think it'd be a problem.
Well, it's, it's allowed. It's in the zoning. So, but then.
I don't think the zoning allows for fencing, even for a day.
Okay, and, and when it was brought to the attention, it was moved. And when it was brought to our attention.
Have to be brought to your attention, guys. Like, come on. Like seriously, this is like one fiasco after another. Like do it, right? Be respectful of the neighbor. Be respectful of the township.
Okay, and, and all due respect, we have been over. Okay, and and all due respect, we have gone over backwards for this guy. We have tried to appease everything within reason. And he's got a problem with everything. And we have proven that none of his problems exist. Every problem that he has brought up has been disproven. Whether it's the storm, the access lane, what have you.
Did you, did you ask him about this and what he thought?
I did not.
Because you don't care.
No, I do, we do care.
See, that's what being. Go ahead.
We could ask for material.
Yeah, we asked for the material. We just didn't ask for the location. Which was.
Can be administratively approved. However, the location wasn't included. It was assumed. So we have an approved site plan. You build according to that site plan. If you change that site plan, you change the location of the wall on the site plan. Submit those site plans to the department.
Was any of that done?
Was what done?
That you changed the site plan and.
Well, we removed everything as soon as we knew about it. Like like I said before, in in ninety percent. Other townships and everything, it'd be a major change or a minor change to an approved site plan, be done in-house. John thought that was approved. He did the materials, so the material was approved. He didn't think about the location of it.
Is this your first? I just can't be your first, like, guys.
Oh, this is my worst project I've ever had.
So, I mean, you should know, like, I I I'm just shocked that you didn't. Think to, you're, hey, we're moving it. We need to do a site plan review. We need to submit that to the town.
We we thought that the product was approved.
Can you see from our perspective?
I I understand completely.
Pulling another fast.
I I understand completely.
The project, right?
I understand completely, but the fact is, we pulled everything up, okay? Which was, I don't know, how many blocks were laid? Ten? Maybe ten. Soon as it was notified, we pulled them up, we moved everything around, and we started the process. I had this ready to go two months ago, and I couldn't get on the planning commission. So we've been waiting two months.
Is it, have we just had a full docket? Okay.
So, and and you had a cancellation on the last docket. So, we've been trying to get and do this. We've been sitting for two months. Now, that doesn't. You know, leave the fact that it looks bad from your point of view. But when you sit for two months on a construction job, do nothing, and our storm can't be put in. Until the retaining wall is done. So, it, you know. I thought it'd be a win-win for everybody. I mean, if you compare the pictures and you look at the. The eight-foot-high concrete wall.
I get you're saying that, but yet you didn't, the 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 biggest, you didn't even go to the neighbor and say, hey.
I've emailed them. I'm the property owner, I'm sorry. This project is not anything malicious. I am not a builder. I have no idea about this.
This pro- this project has been a you-know-what show for.
Oh, my God, yeah. Imagine me, like, my wife's pounding me tonight. You're gonna come home crying. I mean, it's it's horrible. I get that, sir. Mr. McGovern's a nice guy. I went saw him when I first was here. He signed off on the paperwork that we can move the dirt. Then he said, no, no problem, ripped it up. The other builder was garbage. I get that, that's on me. I I've never done a commercial project. I screwed up.
But now we're having a challenge again, right? Like, again.
This is the last thing, sir, and it's within my property rights. He he missed that. I I can't apologize enough.
I I'm not, and I'm not saying, but what I'm saying is, like, it's, oh, yeah, sorry. Oh, sorry. Oh, li- listen, at some point, like, guys.
This is the last thing, so you tell me what to do and I'll do it. I've said that since day one. I'm here with hat in hand. I. I don't even, I don't even hardly know what the hell he's talking about with drainage and stuff. I don't know. I just, Mr. McGovern, do whatever you want. I'll move it at the front. I'll do whatever you guys want. I just wanna be in my building. I got employees that can't come.
And that's been his attitude the whole time.
Never been mean.
So.
I know you have.
You know, and and always have problems. So at what point do you stop having problems?
So it's the township's fault?
No, 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 I didn't say it's township's fault. I never said that. I'm just saying, they can't get along.
You're talking about the neighbors?
Yes.
Okay.
And come, you know, compared to his previous comments, I thought this would be a win-win. Helps with the drainage, gives you more landscaping, spread out.
Just interesting to me that it's a win-win, but yet you didn't run it by McGovern. I mean, that to me, if it's truly a win-win. Then he would see it and you'd he'd say, you know what? Yes, this is good. I'm okay with it, but again.
He didn't, he didn't like the retaining wall. He didn't like the grading. He didn't like the retaining wall. He didn't like anything. He. He was upset that he's losing his conceived property. I mean, he went out there one time and moved the property stakes.
Whoa, whoa.
So I was told. And and we had, uh, we had the some, we had, we actually had police tape. Showing where the seven-foot-nine retaining wall is gonna be. Someone allegedly saw him go out there and move it, physically move it. I mean, come on.
Let me ask a question here. So it there clearly are some self-inflicted wounds.
Yes, from the previous builder.
History that I don't know anything about. Well, I'd be curious to have you just. Try to concisely explain to me, when you're saying, hey, this is a win-win, this is way better than a concrete wall, seven feet back. These blocks right near the property line would be better for everyone. Can you just explain to me what what you're asking for us to approve right now and why you view that is better than what's been approved?
To put, well. To put the new blocks wall that can be built without disturbing his property, one foot inside our property. Okay?
Yeah.
It takes away. His concern before was that with the retaining wall being there and everything, the stormwater is gonna rush down the face of that. Um block wall and flood his backyard. The existing goes back there anyway. We aren't gonna change the grading at all. It's gonna run into the retaining blocks. And we're taking that space and we're adding it to the impervious up above. And putting it in our detention pond. So it actually reduces the storm. And his storm concerned. No, no, you're fine.
So this block wall allows for water to come through it.
No.
Because that's what I thought you just said.
No, 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 no. The the space of moving it up to one foot, the the difference between the seven-foot-nine and the one foot. That area. Okay, we're putting up above and adding to our detention area. Plus. Yes, yes, the seven-foot-nine, plus landscaping. You can put bushes in these blocks up above. So we're gonna have landscaping bushes all along the top there. And that was one of his concerns too. You know, that we weren't meeting the landscaping.
In every, wasn't there something where the property line ran down the middle of the driveway?
Right down the middle.
And so by by putting this wall, that pretty much.
The driveway stops.
Right there.
Before, yeah.
So is that, is it still serviceable back there if he puts that wall?
Yeah.
Changed.
We widened the curb cut.
The driveway on this outside of the property. Nothing that they had approved on the south side of the property has changed. They now can independently. Get in and out of their driveway without ever going on Mr. McGovern's east side of the property. That part hasn't changed.
Okay. Do you have any, anything else? Is anybody having other?
I'm just, I'm curious. Do we have a minimum depth from the property line for fencing in the township, or is it just property land?
You can build on the property wall.
You can build on the property line, okay.
As long as you can access it from your property.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you're nice to your neighbor and you get.
Yeah, I see. Thank you.
I mean, I'd I'd love to appease your anger, I, you know, I just, it it's.
It's not directed at you or you. It's directed at the project.
I I.
This is, and and my problem is, it's not just, developers do this all the time. They come in and they. They, I mean, I, the horror stories that we could tell you of, they're just trying to. The fact that we did a cease and desist, and then the following day, they start erecting it, I mean.
That was a home builder trying to do.
Again, no.
Commercial job. That should not be, that really shouldn't be relevant to this. I I really shouldn't. I mean, we we got it approved.
At seven nine.
Uh, yes.
So.
And this is a better, this is a better option.
And then you didn't follow the proper procedures.
Well.
Right, so.
We we didn't follow the proper procedures.
On this, because this is messy enough as it is.
We didn't follow the proper procedures, because probably because. I I'll take blame for it, because I thought it was a minor adjustment to an approved site plan. I'll I'll take blame for it. So, you know, I'd I'll take blame for it, send your hour my way, but it's a win-win. It's it's a better. Better looking, better process, better everything. So. I mean. Either we go back to the eight-foot-high concrete wall, or we go with a better option. That is an improved use and the way to do it.
I have one other question for you.
I do too.
Not, not a hostile one.
Okay.
I underst- like, uh, to me, a win-win would be building this brick wall at the seven-nine. Is there, is there a reason to go all the way to the property line rather than building it at seven-nine? Is it just give you more?
Yes, sir, you can pull. My main business I do is I do grease takes all over the country. So I have trailers that are hauled behind the trucks, so this way they can pull in and drop off a trailer and then swing all the way around.
So it's more room for the swing, okay?
Looking, just when I was out there today.
I did, I did Derek six one six out here.
Well, you could understand.
Understand the seven feet would be important.
Yes.
Given the way the everything is set up there, I can understand.
It was pretty tight from the property line to that I went in there today too.
Why not come over here if you already did a curb cut? Make it, can you, can you do it over? What side would that be? East side, yeah, west side.
All right. I I'm sorry. I've lived here for, I told you, I've lived here for forty-two years. I graduated. My kids are, I read, I. I just wanna help keep going in our community. Mr. McGovern's a nice man. I went and saw him. Might be frustrated and the builder screwed up. I can't apologize enough, I.
He's got a nice building going too.
What other questions? The reason that you're asking for the change from the concrete wall at seven-nine is this is advantageous to you guys.
To everybody.
Yeah.
To everybody.
Well, if I'd known about the block we had proposed this originally, because again, Mr. McGovern's property, and as you said, we were afraid. I didn't want any problems. I didn't want to go under his ground, none of that. They came up with a solution. Again, I'm detached, so.
And this just came up to be a better option.
Yeah, I understand how that happens. All right. I don't have any.
I have a question for staff.
Anybody have any other questions for the building?
No, I don't think so. We're gonna hear from most of them.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, do we get a rebuttal after this?
Well, do you have a question for staff? Do you want to do it after?
Yeah, let's let's finish.
Mr. McGovern?
We're doing.
Thank you. I know it's, trust me, I have all people understand it's hard to hold your tongue.
Yeah, I I wasn't gonna talk about the present issues, but just to go back slightly on some claims that were made about me pulling a stake. Let me give some backstory here. Because there's new members of the board. And on the easement process, the first time I found out about this. Um, well. Easement that was submitted into the township and then approved without my knowing about it was when. Many yards of dirt was put on my property to build a ramp. And then I went down and talked to Andrea to ask what was going on. So that was my first awareness. And that was months after it was approved. The uh. Comment about me moving a stake is. The story here is, is that. For several months, things like a a a large excavator, the the forms for the concrete. Pourings, um, all kinds of equipment was staged on my property, and I said nothing. Uh eventually, I walked over and asked who's who's in charge of the con- excavator. Can you move it off my property? I I don't know who that is. Well, can you get, can you have whoever the project manager is get ahold of me so you can just move it? And we're talking about a big piece of equipment. I walked over three or four times to talk to the guy with doing the concrete work, asked him if he could move the concrete forms off of my property, away from my. HPAC, away from my power, everything, my heavy power coming into the building. He completely ignored me every single time, and he was the owner. They came in to pour the concrete and they dumped the waste material up out of the.
The owner of the excavation company, not the owner of the building?
Uh, the owner of.
The concrete company?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Okay, I just wanna make sure it's not.
It might be a contractor, but I was talking to the subcontractor.
Okay.
Okay, whoever was.
Okay.
Concrete was only poured one time.
Yeah.
So, um. And then, uh, you know, none of those requests were were. Abided by. And then I walked over there at one point, um, in the future, a week, couple of weeks later, I lost track of the time. But there was an orange spray painted stake put way on my property. They had written on their property line. I thought, okay, this has gotta stop. It just happened to be on the other side where that excavator was. Now, and uh. So. I I'm just kind of at my wits end at this moment, so I called the sheriff and said, you know, there's some trespassing going on here. And they came out and he said, well. My GPS tells me that the property line is actually in the middle of the driveway. I can't do anything about it because this stake says property line. So then, and I've been at this location now for forty years. So then I had to call a a leading survey company in town, have them come back out. Resurvey the line, which I'm sure was true in the first place. And put stakes in the ground, spray paint the drive, do everything, and the stakes ended up into this ramp that was going up.
We did this at your expense.
My expense. That's it. And then, uh. Called the sheriff back out. And said, and the surveyors were still on site. I said, the surveyors are here. They're saying that's the property line. That equipment is on my property. That stake is bogus. And uh I need you to do something about it. So we talked to the contractor at the time. And uh. After everything was marked, I pulled the stake. After the surveys marked everything with their marks, I pulled this bogus stake. And there was another stake over by my HPAC equipment that pulled. Um, so that that's the backstory on that claim.
Hey, guys, I I I had him be quiet while you were up there.
So, um, coming to, you know, there's a lot of history between that that and now. But. This photo and this discussion about the the blocks that were dropped, there's some history ahead of that. The 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 fence line that they put in was supposed to identify the property line, but that the new, the new contractor put in it.
The chain link fence?
Chain link fence.
Okay, the one that was temporarily there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And this went on for some time, and it kept getting moved over. Onto my property, particularly in the back where they're doing all the earthwork. And so I called the project manager and I said, could could you move? Move the fence back onto the property line? And he came over to talk to me, and he's a nice guy. And I said, could you just move everything back to the property? This is way before the blocks were dropped. And uh, he said, we'll do that as soon as we get done and back with the earth moving. And he says, and then we gotta put that fence up, that wall up. And I said, yeah, but the wall's gotta be seven foot nine away from the property line. So why, why is it? He's just silent. I don't think they're ever planning on putting it seven foot nine on the line. And the the wall that was the ten blocks or whatever it was that were put up, this go around, we're done on a weekend. It just seems to be a pattern there.
On a weekend?
Yeah.
That the picture that's up there too, is that red stake, the property line?
Yeah.
So the rubble that's there is also.
Yeah, the fence pushed back.
The fence with the the sandbags on?
Yeah, it's supposed to be on the property.
You're just like, guys, I don't know much about construction, but typically, sandbags usually indicates that that fence is gonna be there a while now, just for a few hours.
And I'm not. Not everybody was here the first go around, and the architect said, with his plan with five foot seven. There's no need, there's gonna be no encroachment, because you have diagonal. There's no need, there's gonna be no encroachment cuz you have diagonal construction and we, and we're gonna do diagonal, we have a construction technique where it's not gonna go over on. Onto, uh, across the property line. But, uh. The thing about. The buffer zone of, of seven foot nine inches, I thought was pretty tight. To start out with. One thing. It, it's reasonable to think at some point. Somebody's gotta get around that wall to go to the backside of the property. And. Putting the wall on the property line. And, and, and a claim was made because the blocks are gonna have better drainage. Well, the drainage was there. In the seven foot nine already. And. If the wall goes on the property line, the chance. That there's a problem with drainage. Or there's a problem with the structural aspects of that wall is not zero. So you put a, you put a raised parking lot with earth. A block wall. And if there is a problem, there's no way to address that.
Without having to go to your property.
Having to go on a property line. And this could be ten years from now. It, it's just common sense. That there needs to be some space. To, to do at least the maintenance part of it, but the drainage feature was already there. So I don't, I'm, I'm missing the part about the improvement. Um. The, uh, new contractor came over sometime before these other problems and showed me a brochure of a. Block construction and thought that, that the current owner of Mr., Mr. Baker thought I'd be better looking. And I, I said, look, we've had some. Difficulties with stand-up conversations in the lobby. I said, if you're gonna make a change to construction, you gotta go talk to the township. There was never any discussion about moving the wall. It was just changing the material.
There was never in discussion with you either, Andrea, about moving the wall, was there?
Correct.
Okay, just to be clear.
Yeah, I mean. I didn't even know until late last week that it was even. Requested to move the wall. So, um. It, it just seems to me that, you know, I, I don't wanna be exposed to something in the future. You know, where the township might be out of it and then I gotta deal with it. And it just seems unreasonable that this is. A block, stacked block construction. I don't know what the engineering stats are and I, it doesn't matter to me, I just. It might need work and the drainage might need work. There's no way to do that maintenance without a buffer zone.
Anybody have any questions for?
Uh. Yeah, I guess I might as well ask. I mean, you, if, if. If it were up to you, you'd rather have the concrete wall seven foot nine as opposed?
I, I don't, I think it's a red herring. I think the wall can be built with a different kind of material with seven foot nine.
Okay, but so, well, let me just, can you answer my question though? I mean, if, if we're just talking one or the other.
Would you rather have the brick wall at a foot off your property line or the concrete wall at seven feet nine inches off?
I'd rather the concrete wall seven foot nine. It's an eight-foot wall. I mean, it's a really.
Yeah.
Unique addition to the landscape. It, it's, it's, uh. It's a raised parking lot in, you know, in the middle of. Nothing.
Yeah, and I just, just. I just like to make a comment, which is I totally hear everything that you're saying and. The frustration that you must feel having gone through the history on this project. I wouldn't be, if I were you. Agreeable to anything that I didn't have to agree to. Um, and sitting up here and hearing what's happened, it makes me feel like, well, I don't wanna go out of my way to do these guys any favors either. Uh, but I'm also not in a position to like punish them because of what happened, just, just so you understand. I mean, I, I.
People have property rights.
Yeah, the people do still have property rights and sometimes they do things that they're, you know. My neighbor might do something that, that I'm not super crazy about either.
Yeah, but if there's maintenance involved, this is not poured concrete, this is a block structure.
Yep.
Uh, and there's gonna be some kind of a drainage system. And if there's some kind of problem there. How do you think that's gonna get resolved? They're gonna take apart the, the block wall?
And they're gonna do it from their side?
Maybe.
I, I don't think that's.
I mean.
I don't think that's. Common sense. I think it's.
I, I think.
Not likely.
I'm a little frustrated cuz we're asking questions and not public comment to not an applicant, so I think this whole setup right now feels completely inappropriate. Um. And I just have a comment. It's not a question to you, but these walls are built on property lines. As retaining walls between homes all of the time. And so your question, that point is irrelevant to me, but I, I.
Are they running heavy, heavy trucks?
With delivery with you anymore, because again, this is not a public, you tell me if I'm wrong, Leslie.
No, absolutely, and I.
Hearing. Yeah, and I think. He should have spoke in the very beginning, said his piece, had his five minutes and we're sitting here listening and, and no offense, I understand your frustration. I'd be mad too. I would be super mad. I think you're treated like crap.
Privilege to do this.
Yeah, I, I think.
You can do that.
And so I did.
In the, in the future, um, yeah, the, there, there was no public hearing on this particular item. So when I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, if you are. The applicant or a representative of this project, then that, then you can speak at that time, but anybody else who wants to speak on that project is supposed to speak at that time, but.
Well.
But the chair also has the privilege to, oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't punish the neighbor for that. It's, I mean.
No.
He's just here.
I'm not gonna, I'm not here to deliberate with him about this. I, I, I understand your frustration. I get it. I'd be super mad too. And it is, somebody who represents a township, I'm not very happy that this is, uh, the third or fourth time that they've done something that I feel like. They shouldn't have done or they were, are out of the scope. I have some questions for our attorney, but I don't have anymore.
Yeah, I, I don't either. I appreciate you being here.
You, you guys have anything for?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and I may be able to address your, um, question, um, member course range. Um, and I think, um, remember Kramer touched on this a little bit cuz this was something that was discussed. Um, during the previous application process when the cease and desist had been issued. Um, and I think we, we, we discussed. That while prior violations is something that the planning commission can certainly discuss and keep taken into consideration, that's evaluation. Of the factors required under the zoning ordinance for granting or denying an amendment to a site plan. Um, it's certainly not something that I would say that the planning commission can or should hang its hat on. Um, but again, I want, you know, I just wanna. Touch on that, but you know, I don't think that the discussion here, you know, about those issues in the past, at least to give context to some of the planning commissioners who are not. Present or on the commission at that time, um, have some background on it.
My question for you is this, and it's not a straightforward question. The previous. Planning. The previous. Approval was for a retaining wall built seven feet nine inches from the property.
Yes.
The reason for that was due to the footings and the, the, the structure that had to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Legally, if it is their right to put a retaining wall or put this on the property line, did they really have to come back to us? For new site plan approval for this, if this, cuz that's where I'm getting confused. I don't understand why this is here if we're hearing. You know, Andrea said to us twice that this is their property right. So if this is a right by their property, the material was approved by. The planning department, then why are they here in front of us if? If what I'm hearing is true?
Yes, I, my, my opinion on that would be yes, and the reason for that is because, and I know there's been some discussion about major and minor site plan amendments. And that is true that some, many zoning ordinances in fact do distinguish between those, um, and give specific. Information of what constitutes a minor and a major site plan amendment. Miners tend to be ones that can be administratively approved by the planning department and majors have to be reapproved by the planning commission. Um, Cascade Township's zoning ordinance does not distinguish between minor and major site plan amendments. How I read the section of the zoning ordinance that deals with amendments to a site plan is that the applicant must follow the original process. Um, in this. Instance, I look at this as an amendment while it is, um. Partially changing the material, it is also changing the location. So, um, in my opinion, while. Under some zoning ordinances, it might constitute a minor amendment that might not have to come in front of a planning commission. That's just the way the process works here in Cascade Township, so.
Right, but I. What I don't understand, and I, again, I know. And, and I am all about upholding previous decision of a planning commission, especially when it was ten, nine months ago. I, I think it's crazy to change something now and I don't believe in going back. To change that when a decision was made. I understand the difference between the footings, but what I don't understand is how. We could say no.
Mm-hmm.
If by right, which Andrew has said twice, they have the right to build this.
Well, I don't know if they have a right to change. I mean, it's a change in the sense that. It's, um, and, and maybe, you know, Andrea can speak, can clarify what your point was. I don't look at this as something by right, just because somebody can do something with their property, doesn't necessarily mean that it doesn't constitute a change to a previously approved plan. Um. Again, and I, and maybe you can clarify that, but I, I don't, I don't. Again, I, I, it, it's a change to a previously approved plan.
Right.
And I would consider it's a minor change either.
That, I think we're getting conflicting.
But, yeah, but.
Messages.
But to Wendy's point, I think, uh, I mean. If it's an amendment or original approval, we can't just say, well. We want you to move this wall three feet. For some arbitrary reason.
Right, well, I mean, and it's about, and you have a.
I don't get it.
Yeah.
It's a, i- if you have a site plan that's approved, even though there are certain aspects of a site plan that may otherwise be approved by right without getting that site plan permission, maybe they already complied with the landscaping requirements or whatever. Um, they, i- if they're, if they want to change any facet of that. It still constitutes an amendment, whether it's permitted by right or not under the zoning ordinance. And again, you know, I, I haven't reviewed. What they wanna do in detail enough to know the substance and requirement of the, of the zoning organs that buy here, but I don't think that alone, um. Permits them to bypass the otherwise, uh, applicable process for a site plan amendment. And I. Agree, you know, this may feel superfluous under the circumstances and that may be a factor the planning commission wants to consider, um, in determining whether to approve or deny the amendment. Um, but again, you know, I'm, I'm just reading what the, the zoning ordinance says and. Um, it doesn't say, you know, amendments that are otherwise not permitted under the zoning ordinance, so you need to go back to the planning commission. It just says, any amendment to the site plan, then. They're proposing not to do what was originally approved and change it to something else.
Right, and so you'd tell us the. To change the concrete wall at seven foot nine to the block wall along the property line, they have to submit this application and come back before us for approval.
Correct.
And that's why they're here.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
And, and I do wanna note the distinguished, the, the difference between a by right and a site plan approval. So you, you could have a use that's by right, like a, a warehouse. This is a by right use. It doesn't require a special land use or a variance or other. It's allowed in that zone district, just like a. Building on a property line, line is allowed in that zone district. However, you still have to go through the, the approval process of site plan review. And also as part of that site plan review, we have to consider if all other elements can be, uh. Done. So when we originally approved this in twenty twenty-three, it was with that grading easement. So that meant it was physically possible to do it because the neighbor gave permission to work on their property. At, before that was even approved, the applicant, and you can see from the image on the screen, the applicant began bringing fill into the site. They demolished every single tree on the site and started bringing fill in. Without talking to the engineer. Therefore, you know, the, the reason that they need a retaining wall is partly because they brought in fill and changed the terrain of the site. So yes, you're allowed to have a retaining wall. On site, but if you can't do it without getting approval from the property owner, you could approve it today. And, and they would still not be allowed to do it if they continued to work on the property owner's property. That would still be illegal for them to do it. By trespassing onto the neighbor's property. It's very, very hard for the township to. To navigate that.
Right, but I feel like that was the, that was the issue that came to the planning commission in September, and I feel like now we're going back to that issue again. Um, just, just personally, I feel like that's what was hashed out before.
And you could certainly condition approval of any amendment on no encroachment. I mean, that, that would be a given. No matter what, but that at least gives the planning, the township, um, enforcement authority to say, if there's a violation of that site plan, there's encroachment on the neighboring property owner. The township could revoke the site plan and otherwise pursue additional enforcement action, um. For violating that site plan. So that's another option as well.
Yeah, it's hard cuz I feel like this keeps coming back and different things are considered each time because there's different issues each time, but. Just in a general question, landscaping requirements, what have not been met, what has been approved previously to not be met? That may be met now. If this is put into place because there's gonna be a landscape buffer, like is, is there something?
That's correct.
Was, was a compromise previously that we are getting back? Landscape wise?
Yes, I did not count the trees to see, but that could be another condition as the planning commission required. That all trees required for the landscaping buffer on the east property line are, that, that they meet that landscaping requirement because they were previously. Um.
See, that's.
Allowed.
Where you guys were allowing some exceptions.
Yeah.
Based on cer- something certain, and we're not getting all of that piece to it now to know, oh, now if we're moving this right up against that property line, we need to put back into place some of these other things that were waived previously.
Well, and what I don't like is that, no mention of that, you know, the material approval, I'm okay with it, right? But now I'm moving it and I feel like. Whether it was intentional or unintentional. It, it just wasn't mentioned.
Yeah, I get, I mean, yeah, and firstly, I'm.
And.
I'm, I'm just gonna believe what people, what people, they're saying to us that they didn't think that they need to. Leslie's telling us that some zoning spells out reasons that they do need to come back.
I, I'm sorry, if you're moving it from seven and a half, uh, seven point nine feet.
But it, but I think there's, there was, that they feel like that was a minor. And, and I think that that's, I just have to believe what people.
I, I do wanna say when.
Yeah, cuz there's no footings now because it wasn't needed.
Uh, I do wanna say that when the material change was approved administratively by the planning department, I explicitly stated that the location could not move. From that seven nine. So, y- yes, I do wanna give people the benefit of the doubt, but I know that. I don't know that I wrote it. I could actually go and look in BSN AI, I probably did. Um, I was very explicit with the, the builder that they needed to stay at that. Proper, that seven point nine foot.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I'm totally okay with.
I have a staff question. You do conclude, Andrea, you, you say some things in your report like that the, um. You know, the, the, this request removes all the mitigating design elements of the approved site plan. Trying to articulate a question. Is there like, I mean, is there an engineering or a drainage concern that we should be aware of because of this new? Request that we don't have adequate information to answer, or is?
No, the, the drainage, the calculations for this, this is so minor that this has, the drainage has always been sufficient for the site plans that were approved. The applicant has continuously worked with Eric to make sure that the calculations met the requirements of the stormwater ordinance. There's never been an issue with that.
Okay, and then, as far as while, like concerns while they moved, you know, dirt and have changed the topography or something, I mean, how, how do we address? Does that create a concern that we should, should be? Considering and our decision to approve or deny them?
I think, I think the point that I was trying to make is that it wouldn't be required and that the, the neighbor issues that we do when we look at these, you know, ask, is there? Is this appropriate with the surrounding land uses and adjacent buildings and such? And it. Could have been a lot more appropriate. They made decisions and then we approved a site plan to mitigate the issues that they had caused, and now this is essentially just. Backing up the mitigating factors that were part of the original approval. I hope that, I don't know.
Uh. Does it, do you guys, um?
The elevation.
Come up to the mic, yeah.
Yeah. There's a grade problem on this site, okay? Always has been. That would have stopped the ability of our builder. To be able to have his right to do an addition. You gotta put it at the same finished floor as the existing office. Okay? So Phil was brought in legally, done right. To accommodate the same elevation as the office. Okay, if there's an existing, I mean. Okay, if there's an existing, I mean. This thing, you could get a variance very easily on the grade difference. I mean, that that alone would be a. Reason for being able to get a retaining wall on here. You follow me?
They didn't do that first before they brought in the grade and they re- excavated the neighborhood.
Well, there's a lot of unfortunate things.
Like like I said, I think there's a lot of self-inflicted wounds here and it's hard because. I understand, you know, I want to support the neighbor, support staffs, you know, I I hear what Alan's saying. I mean, to have Andrea say, when I approved the change, I told him that it has to be at seven foot nine. And then they just go out there and put it right along the property line. I mean, that's. Concerning to say the least and like, well, if if I if I could use that as a reason that I don't have to approve this for him. I don't want to go out of my way to do it, but I don't know if that's reason alone for me to deny the request. Because of all, like, I want to punish him for the past problem.
I I I think getting boiling it all completely down. I will, I will take the emotion completely out of boiling it down. The planning commission approved it at seven nine. They are coming back later saying, hey, we want to change it. You know what? Sorry, that was that was the original plan. That's we approved it. You know, if if we allow this to happen, then every time the planning commission approves something. Six months later, our new board comes on, they're gonna, the developer's gonna come back and try and, you know. And 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 I don't see a valid enough reason to. To change it, right? If if it's the turnaround trucks, you probably could have done some more in the front side of the building to accommodate that.
May I ask?
I agree with you. The only thing that I think. Coming back saying, okay, we found this new material. We want to put it closer. But we also wanted now uphold our landscape buffer that we were getting a waiver before to do because of this. The the footings and all of these other pieces to it, you know, and and I guess we could put that as a condition. Choose to where we then say, okay. This is gonna look better. Hopefully, we're gonna have some landscape buffer in here. It's gonna green up this once. Which once was a complete con- or asphalt or concrete. Parking lot area that was the property line between these two businesses. So, you know, I'm about green.
I know, but the thing is, the thing is, I don't want to trade a neighbor, a neighbor's who's having issues for some trees.
Right, but.
Who's who's been pretty abused.
Looking back. At the current in the actual, uh, how the project's gonna look at the end.
Uh, yeah, and to me, I mean, if somebody's in the middle of a project and wants to come back and say, we think that there's a way to do this better. That is better for us and better for the neighbor. I mean, that's. Well, they should be able to do that. And so that's why I'm willing to hear that today and consider that. I also, though, I guess the flip side is it definitely shouldn't be the case. At one time, I thought I heard this is exactly what was denied before. And like, that shouldn't be the scenario either. Like, hey, we're just gonna come back and retry to get what we didn't get before.
You guys, you you haven't been recognized.
Yeah, and then back to what you had mentioned before too, like. Frustrating part to me is if staff specifically said, I can't move, the materials changed. Most people then would know the next step would be to come back for a new site plan review.
Or, okay, if you want it moved.
What do we do? Yeah, to ask staff, yes.
And then site, new site plan review, move on from there. That's, that's the one piece I think. Part for me is that if if staff said it has to be in the same location, then it was started to be erected closer. I I think that um personally. My feeling is looking at what's best for the. Sorry, the township in the long term and if if truly. And this is my my personal opinion and I'm willing to listen to others. My opinion is if if they can put it one foot within their property. Which is acceptable in general. We can get back some landscape buffer at the top of it. I would be much happier.
See, I wouldn't. I wouldn't. Sorry, but I don't think that's fair to the other neighbor. I don't think it's fair to the township. I don't think it's fair to the planning commission beforehand that ruled on this. Um, I think if you came up with a better material and you said, hey, we'd like to sit down with the neighbor, we'd like to sit down with the township. Can we come up with a with a compromise instead? I mean, I I I feel like the same. You know, it's. Just wasn't done. I don't, I don't, doesn't make me feel like it was done with the best, right? And and I'm not saying it wasn't. I'm saying I don't feel, I think I just.
I think you're right. I'm just looking long term for the township, driving down that street, looking at this location. What would be the best for the township aesthetically within that area? The landscape buffer was waived previously, putting it back in. With this, yeah, as a compromise between putting this wall back up. Completely different material closer to the property line that is on their property still. That's my.
What what is the standard for the landscape buffer that was waived before?
I'm trying to look at the count. I have to go and do the calculation. Um, they they were. They didn't have adequate trees across here, so they did propose to put a few here, maybe four or five in the previous plan. Um, this does have more shrubs. They don't, I don't know that you necessarily have all the plant materials here, but. We can see if they can pull it off and if they can't pull it off, then we'll be right back there.
Mr. McGovern, I'm gonna ask you a question. Is there any? Compromise that you can, that you would be happy with? And if there's not, that's fine. I'm just asking.
Well, back to the. This structure of the wall doesn't have zero chance of knowing in the future. I got a feeling that I might get stuck for some.
Well, what I'm saying is instead of uh one foot, uh, five feet, three feet, two, what, I don't know. Pick like, is there, and and listen, if there's not, then there's not. I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'm kind of up here on this landscape offer waiver because I thought in that seven foot nine area, there was going to be vegetation.
It was not gonna fully meet the landscape buffer and that's why it me if. Feet over, I suggest you put some trees in between there and not allowing concrete right up to there for your neighbor to use. And I think for you that it would be, again, these walls are constructed all over. I don't, I don't have the. Information packet on how great they are about falling down. I've never seen one fall down. These are constructed all over the place and I think.
So, hold on, hold on. Hey, guys, guys, address, address. Hold on. Just hold on. Um, Mr. McGovern, is there any? Compromise that you would feel okay with? And again, if there's not, there's not.
Seems like there needs to be some space between the property line and the wall in order for future maintenance. If this, it doesn't exist here at one foot.
What would you think would be appropriate? Would it be four feet?
Uh, that might work. I mean, maybe plant some bushes to be put in that space.
So I do have the tree calculation from the previous plan. They were deficient. Eleven under story trees, nine canopy trees and ten shrubs on the east property line.
We moved them when that was accepted. We were, we met the requirements of the.
Yeah, so. They were still deficient. The the requirement says that you have to have so many trees within a twenty foot. They did provide more trees. However, it was still an exception given by the planning commission that the planning commission can require in this application.
So then my question to the owner, um, what are your thoughts about being a good neighbor and compromising and saying? God, what do we say, three feet from, four feet from the property line? Having the block.
Let's split it, do two, and I'll get the heck out of here and never come back.
Or three?
He offered four, I can go to one, so me in the middle of two.
I think he's coming up with four, it's like seven point nine.
So, yeah, so we were saying four instead of the seven point nine. I mean, so right now you're approved at seven point nine. You want to go to one. I'm trying to come up with a compromise and saying, bring it to four. So like, you give a little, he gives a one.
I I think that part of this concern was.
You know, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that we're not gonna be able to get it on the record. Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Thank you, Andrea. I'm sorry.
His concern previously was that all the water was gonna run down the face of that and flood his back. Back there. Now he's changing his tune. That that's, that must no longer be a concern.
Concern about putting it at four feet?
Well, it doesn't do us any good because. We're just gonna be adding landscape on top than adding more landscape on the bottom. No, 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 I've three feet, two feet, I two feet, two and a half feet, four feet isn't gonna uh do us any good. It's not.
It's, Mr. McGovern, three feet? How about we do three feet? He's at two, we're at four, that's three feet. And if it doesn't, it doesn't. Listen, if it doesn't, it doesn't. I'm just asking.
We'll throw bushes down there, so.
It's okay. I know I'm putting you on the spot. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's fine. Take a minute.
And they can put landscaping within bushes and shrubs in there, in that zone of three feet.
And then when taking off the top of the.
Would that mean the requirement if they took it off the top and moved it down there?
It it would, but the the it's still the canopy trees that they've placed other where places. Because the canopy trees aren't gonna live.
The numbers are correct.
No, I I got it. They're just not in the location. No, I get it. But my, I'm trying to explain to him. If they did three feet, they bushed it on your side to help with your drainage and stuff. Because that would be a permeable permeable surface, which would allow for water to go down where the bushes are planted, the three feet buffer in between. You'll have to do something at the top of a railing or something because. We don't want a truck falling off the top of it. Um, and then they still do.
Because that railing is really gonna stop it. I know what you mean. I know what you mean.
Because it's gonna be a driveway up to it. I mean, there has to be something to stop people from falling off the edge because we do have that issue other places. Like right here. Um, and then they still keep the canopy trees that they agreed to place elsewhere in their property. What that was the negotiation for the.
I want to see a site plan too before we approve anything. So so I want to make this abundantly clear, okay? This is your property. This is Mr. McGovern's property. This is thirty-sixth street. Here's the property line. That wall, three feet from the property line, that wall can start, not, oh. This side of the wall is at three feet. No, 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 no. The the east side would be in three feet. Does that make sense what I'm saying? So you take a tape measure from the from the property line, you measure it and three feet is. Where the wall is. And then they, I don't know how thick that wall is. What is it, like two feet? Is it, is it three feet thick? Okay, so it starts at three feet and then goes west. Mr. McGovern. Is it, what, is there a, like a, how, what's, how big? Is the pad buried? And then how many um? Is it a pad and then they just go right on top or is it a pad, then one block, then you put some dirt in and then it goes up or?
Yeah, the the, when you, when you convert to the um blocks, engineer blocks rather than a concrete footer using a crushed stone footer. Which also provides a lot of drainage uh to alleviate part of that concern.
Again, I think this is important. So can you come up to the microphone?
We're saying up there and you maybe just state your name and who you, who you are.
Sean from Suburban Landscapes, we're the excavation contractor and landscape contractor on site. So my understanding is the original, and I have not been involved in this from the beginning for the record. Um, we were brought in with uh the new contractor to try and fix the problem. So, um. Originally, this was a poured concrete wall. Poured concrete wall is generally gonna have a poured footer involved. And my understanding, because of the load on top of this, the footer was extra large, which is why the setback was so far on the original plan. When you go to the engineer blocks rather than a poured concrete wall, it's uh or concrete footer, it's a crushed stone footer. For lack of better words, crush crush stone foundation, which also has drainage incorporated into it. Per the engineered design of the block. So from a. Water perspective, it's probably better than a poured concrete foot footer because we actually have drainage built into it. Um, and then to, your original question was, yes, generally, there's between a half to one block completely underground. Which gives it the lateral movement uh to to kind of tie it in. So you're sitting on a crushed stone footer and then you have a a certain amount of topsoil and things that are pushed up against it to keep it from moving.
Okay, so we could put, you could potentially put more topsoil on the, I'm gonna call it the east side.
That is correct.
And then you could put plants there or or shrubs, whatever.
Yeah, within a reason, there is gonna be some stone underneath there and I don't, I'd have to look at the engineering to see how much there is, but. Um, yeah, and and if, you know, if if everybody can. Work together, I think we can clean up your side very nicely with topsoil and seed and blend everything very nicely and get a swale down that side. So that all the water is moving, you know, to the back of the property.
That would go a long way to, okay, that would go a long way to mend things. I would like to see it. I would like you to see it. I would like Mr. McGovern to see it before I approve it. But.
Well, we're gonna have to come back to planning commission. Then it would have to be.
And I would, and I would get them in on the next one, like. I I unless there's a citizen, put them on the very first item agenda if we could. I mean, if we have to.
I would recommend, you know, either proving with these conditions or tabling with the exact conditions and then we'll get the site plan back in here. With the exact dimensions, everything, so that they can come in and you can approve it without any conditions.
Okay, so, so we temporarily approve it with these conditions?
With the stated conditions um and the condition that they provide an updated site plan memorializing.
That's approved and by staff and us and.
As long as it's consistent with the zoning ordinance and what your conditions are. So we might wanna. You want to be very clear in your motion what those conditions are so that they don't have to come back in front of you and that she can administratively consider it. Watch them, if you want your alternative, I just want to keep in mind too that there is a thirty day. Um, deadline for the planning commission to make decisions on site plans. So I I'm assuming we're within that window if we were to. Push it to the following June meeting, but I also want to keep that in mind as well. That, you you know, we can't keep the plan down the road.
No, well, I don't, I don't want them to wait either. I I I'm sorry that you guys had to wait two months. I don't, I don't think that's acceptable either, but unfortunately, sometimes we get slammed, so.
Yeah, we've been pulled off the project for six weeks now and we're running into serious scheduling problems.
Yeah, I'm sorry that happened to you. I'm sorry that happened to the owner and Mr. McGovern. I mean, you had two months and you waited as well, so. Sorry.
I think at the end of the day, I think we can all. I think we can, I don't know if you've met any of my guys out there, but our guys are very accommodating. I think we can all come to agreement where everybody's happy. I really do. Yeah, Zach's great. So, I'd be happy to help with whatever to.
Are you okay with the the wall starts three feet from your property line and they put some nice shrubs in there and landscaping? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to see it, I, 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 I don't know if it's an engineering drawing, I just wanna make sure the wall.
Yeah. Right, he said he's gonna have drawings done pretty quick and will.
You can condition your approval on the applicant providing updated copies of the site plan, engineered drawings, memorializing the conditions as well as providing a comp, copy to the neighbor.
Okay. Uh, all right, I'm gonna make a motion on case number twenty-five, three, eight, eight, six, um, for five, four, four, one, thirty-sixth street. Uh, I'm gonna recommend a temporary provisional approval as long as the applicant meets.
Conditioned approval.
Conditioned approval, conditional approval as long as the applicant, um, meets, um, the following conditions, number one, the wall will not, the east side of the wall will not be, uh, closer than three feet from the property line, uh, there will be, yeah.
Above grade.
Above grade, yeah, three feet, above grade.
Awesome, good.
No, that's good, that's good, three feet above grade, oh, that's good, um, there will be appropriate, um, landscaping and shrubbery, or landscaping and, and plants, uh, trees, whatever, uh, shrubbery, uh, along the east side of the wall facing, um, the neighbor's building. Um.
Sorry.
A railing, obviously.
Talking about like the grating towards the back or something.
Yeah, he's, he's called it something, that's it, that's the word.
Swale, there'll be a swale in, that the, um, applicants, landscaper will work with the neighbor to, within reason, to seed and make the transition look appropriate and nice.
Let me clarify, in order to do that, we have to, we're gonna have to be on your property to, to blend those two. If you want, if, if, if you want bushes planted and if you want that transition to be gradual and flowing, we're gonna have to blend into your property a little bit to make it look.
Which if, if drainage.
You don't want it, you don't want it, that's fine.
If drainage is the issue, then they will make it do what with swell.
Not to be coordinated, I mean, I, I can't advance.
Yeah, you wanna see it?
Can't advance, then yes, but I wouldn't coordinate that.
Yeah, most of the area in question right now is kinda just a wild area, I don't know if it was that way before, it's like the. Okay, you're kinda mowing like maybe ten or twenty foot off the building, and then there's kind of a wild strip.
Might I, might I suggest, just, yeah, just to, and just to clarify this discussion of coordinating with, I, I wanna, I want something in writing, di- demonstrating that they have worked together, so perhaps a condition could be something to the effect of submission of a written agreement, um, between the, between the, um,
That's good.
The two properties addressing, no, not, well, not necessarily an easement, but, um, cuz it's not a permission to enter onto the property with respect to the landscaping, because, and, and the understanding would be if there is no agreement entered, then the site plan is not, the, the amendment is void, so, cuz I don't, I don't want this like vague sort of.
I, I, I think that one part of what we just talked about, maybe can, we can stay off, I don't know, often I'm gonna act, maybe I'm just on my own. Would take care of a.
Okay, so you just, you don't want it to blend, just?
Well, I, I don't know, I wanna cover, uncover the motion here with that, I mean, I might just, yeah.
All right, let's keep, keep going.
Okay, so. I don't even remember where I was.
The bushes.
So is that that, so that the, there will be, yeah, there'll be bushes and plants that are approved by, um, the township and.
Want the requirements of the buffer yard to be back? No, they, they can keep the canopy trees wherever they were putting the canopy trees, this is separate, that they will be bushes between that property, the retaining wall and the property.
And the east property, yes.
Added to the requirements, or can we subtract?
Yep, the bushes, the bushes piece can be subtracted from the requirements, cuz they're being put there, but the canopy trees need to remain wherever.
So bushes can be subtracted from the overall foliage.
Come on, towards the east.
Yeah. Um, that the drawings are submitted and approved by staff and the planning commission before any work is started.
And I, I don't think the, I think you said we, that's the part, cuz we can't, before any work, they'd have to come back here.
They have to come back.
Oh, I said, I thought we have trouble getting back, getting it back in front of us in thirty days.
That's what I was gonna say, I thought that that part was what Leslie said, we didn't have to actually see them, as long as, yeah.
My understanding was the condition was going to be that they provide an updated site plan consistent with the conditions, um, as far as here, provided to the, the township as well as to the neighboring property owners.
As long as they meet the conditions.
Which, that's why you just.
That would be a condition in and of itself, providing that copy, so if they don't provide it, then that condition hasn't been met.
Okay, and then staff appro, staff uses their discretion to, uh.
There's no discretion.
Nope, they just provide a copy of it, and obviously, if it's inconsistent with the site plan that we've approved, then.
What if they, what if they put three shrubs there and they said, listen, we got three shrubs there?
Tell me how many shrubs you want there, yep, you better be a little more specific.
Okay, uh, I don't know how many shrubs went there, I don't know.
I will just say, whatever, whatever would, whatever would be allowable within the. Yeah, cuz they've gotta be so many feet apart from each other.
I mean.
How many feet are they, what typically, Andrea, how typically are they, three to four feet apart?
Let's ask the landscapers.
Right, depends on this.
Yeah.
This is the submitted plan right here.
I'm not familiar with this new plan, so, hey, I don't, I don't know what it is that they.
What do you recommend, three, five feet apart, four feet apart?
It depends on whether they're talking canopy's.
No, we're talking shrubs, shrubs.
Covering.
What did you expect?
Um, look at the landscape, uh, that would be.
Was that it?
We will reread this motion.
Thank you, cuz I, I don't even remember what I said.
Yeah, we can say it again.
I'll be like, I'm out, somebody else do it.
Yeah.
Hopefully Leslie's taken notes.
Five foot is probably fine.
Five feet, okay.
And how long is the wall, how long is the wall?
Are you good with five feet, five, Mr. McGovern, are you good with five feet, every, every shrub, five, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's, um, let's see, one. Why don't you just put the length?
Next to, hundred and ninety-two feet?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm reading?
Okay, sh, all right, so, uh, shrubs every five feet.
What about the shrubs on top of the wall, are you requiring that?
No.
So you're just talking about the, within the three feet buffer.
Yes, because he's.
Just wanna clarify that.
All right, uh, is there anything else before I redo this motion?
My only other recommendation would be any other, um, con, um, conditions of the original site plan that are not modified, remain in full course in the best.
Okay.
I E. the canopies, which were previously, you know, aren't being changed by this.
All right, let's take another shot at this again, all right, uh, make a motion, uh, for case number twenty-five, three, eight, eight, six, um, site plan for five, four, four, one, thirty-sixth street, um, be approved under the following commission, uh, conditions, that the retaining wall be no closer than three feet from the property, from the east property line.
Above grade.
Uh, above grade, the, that, uh, shrubs be placed, um, on the east side of the retaining wall, uh, every five feet, no less than every five feet. Um, that all previous, um, uh, greenery and, and canopy, uh, requirements stay in place from the original approval back in September, and then all other, um, that a site plan be submitted to the township for, uh, approval, review and approval. Um.
And the neighbor.
What was the other thing, that, that you meant, the, the swale?
Swale.
Swale.
Well, I think we took it off, unless they can agree between them, then.
Okay, we'll get rid of the swale.
That, that'll be between them.
Is there anything else, did I miss anything?
All previous conditions.
All previous conditions.
Previous conditions.
All previous conditions.
Three feet.
Three feet.
Um, providing a copy of the site plan, the bushes within the three foot buffer.
Every five feet.
Every five feet.
I think that's it. Andrea, is there anything else in your notes? Nope, I'm writing it down, all other conditions of approval.
And the original site plan remain.
Simply the contour of my property is not adjusted, it's not adjusted.
Yes, yes, the, the, the neighbor's property, uh, is not altered, uh, the contour of the nature's, neighbor's property is not altered in any way.
Yeah, and they can't go on there anyway.
Um, we got site plan approval, that's it, is there anything?
Any date deadline or anything?
Uh, and then, uh, we.
You could provide a deadline for providing a copy of the updated site plans, perhaps, um, maybe fourteen days or something like that, if you guys think you can. Okay, all right, seven days.
Then I, I.
That's fourteen days.
Yeah.
Provide an updated copy of the site plan.
Write an updated copy of the site plan.
To the applicant, to, to the township as well as to the neighbor within fourteen days of today's date.
And then township staff needs to approve that for construction to start.
Compliance with the approved conditions as well as the original site plan approval.
And it's. Okay.
We're good. I'll support.
Yeah, I, just, just a point of clarification, that, that providing a copy to the neighbor isn't giving the neighbor some open-ended.
No.
Ability to object, but the neighbor could say, hey, does this comply with the conditions that were approved, just really the purpose of that.
So, I gotta support, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Wendy.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed? Okay.
All right, thank, good luck, guys.
Yeah.
You too, I mean, eh, kinda, like, okay. I, I know, we, we're trying. Guys, guys, be a little bit more, just head out in the home room, thank you.
Thank you.
Unless you wanna sit and listen.
Uh, all right, uh, Article nine, cascade, uh, request action to set up a hearing for draft zoning ordinance.
Yes, so I, I did send an email out, the draft ordinance is on the website, we're not going to discuss everything today, but we have the draft ordinance for the public and for the planning commission to review. Um, if you have looked through it and you'd like to make some comments or ask any questions, we can do that today. But really, our goal is to set the public hearing for July seventh. Full caveat, the, the version that is online is a draft version, and we're gonna continue to work on that as a subcommittee. Um, we will, you know, discuss this more on the seventh meeting. At the meeting on July seventh, but that's what we'd like to do at this point, we feel confident that we're moving in the right direction and that a full draft of this can be presented at the planning commission to set a public hearing for July seventh.
The, is there no obligation to, uh, solidify what the draft is before notice this out, it could be.
You could, um, you can always, uh, during the public hearing or after the public hearing, um, make changes to it, or table the decision and.
No, I just mean, it's, we, like, it's, we're gonna set up for public hearing on a draft that is going to be revised in, prior to the public hearing, that's fine.
Yeah, when we, um, when we notice out the public hearing, a copy of the draft must be, the final draft must be on file at the township, is that, is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, cuz it sounded like Andrea was saying we're still gonna revise it a bit.
I, I think a final version needs to be completed before the, the notice goes out.
That's right. I'm just gonna say, I've, I've been asking something about this before, and it just seems weird to me, because how then do you look at it if it's not a final before the final revision?
So you could, so you, you got, you guys could review that final draft, make notes in that time, that fifteen day timeframe, or however long it's going to be, at least has to be at least fifteen days. Um, and then that would be discussions, or there, there could be, have internal discussions with staff, but a final draft has to be available.
I want this done more than anything, I mean, more than anybody in this room, I think, but I am super.
I'm on there with you, I want my Tuesdays back.
I think you're gonna agree with me, that I don't wanna hash this out in a subcommittee meeting for the next two weeks, and then have to like take notes of everything that's changed, because then we're gonna sit here at this planning commission, and then, you know, you might have questions about things that we've already changed in the next two weeks in a subcommittee, and it's gonna make more time for us, and we're gonna have to hash it out multiple times, because whatever this draft is, is what, is the, is a, a document that we're all gonna talk about and I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, Leslie, it really can't be changed until the changes are all kind of submitted then, and everybody's kind of agreeing as a planning commission, okay, these are the changes, and then they go to the board.
Correct.
So, I don't wanna sit in a subcommittee meeting the next couple of weeks, hash through, like, cuz we, we just got this as well this week, or Friday, Thursday, Friday. Last, Thursday or Friday, and we, I haven't had a chance to go through it, we haven't had a subcommittee meeting to talk about the final draft of it, so I don't think it's ready to be set as a final draft, if this subcommittee hasn't looked at it and discussed it as a final draft. It, and I want it done more than anybody in the world, like you said, I want my Tuesdays back, I, and I, I know it's frustrating, and every time, like, we talked today about getting, um, you know, a, a pre-existing building in the area, like, what are we gonna do?
Great idea.
Yeah, there's so many things that we, that this zoning has to be put into place to address, because there's so many issues with our current zoning, but I don't feel as a subcommittee member that I'm ready to put a stamp on it, saying it's a final draft, when we haven't looked at it yet and discussed it as a committee. I don't think that's fair, you?
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I mean, I don't, I, you know.
We can, we can hold off on setting any public hearing now, we can set a hearing for a later date, and also consider that we can always hold multiple public hearings, that we are required by law to hold a minimum of one public hearing, so getting it out there is always good, cuz you get more feedback, but then we also get, you know, like. It, it, I know, but it's gonna be frustrating to me, as a subcommittee, as anybody that has to listen to this, to be, okay, I'm gonna sit here and listen to public comment for two hours about stuff that maybe next week in a subcommittee meeting, we already are gonna fix. And I, and we have to listen to public comment and say, yep, we know, yep, we know, I mean, just like the comment today you made about, you know, the pre-existing building, that that's on my list of things that I wanna make sure is in there as a subcommittee mem- member, but yet we haven't met to even discuss the final draft to make sure that's in there, so why do I wanna sit through a subcommittee meeting and talk about it, and then also talk about it here?
Yeah, and so, I, I don't need to keep talking about, I, I'm all in favor of moving it forward, I need, the way anybody feels the best. I'd rather not have multiple public.
I agree, I think we should get it through subcommittee, get it here, so that the, the rest of the, the planning commission can look at it, give their input, and then if any changes need to be made, we make those changes, then it goes.
Cuz I feel like, just like the public, like, I wanna look at it when you guys tell me you're done looking at it, right? Right, and I want the public to look at it when the subcommittee says they're done looking at it.
I think July seventh is probably not the best date, right, cuz people are gonna be.
Leslie, just to clarify.
That's true.
Can we set the public hearing date for the next, the next?
The twenty-first.
Yeah, the twenty-first or the August first meeting, whatever that first week is, can we set that without having the final draft right now? The final draft just has to be posted within thirty days of it.
So here's, so here's my concern with doing that, I would rather set the meeting for the public hearing, once the subcommittee's done with it, and the, and the rest of the planning commission is reviewing it, because theoretically, guys, we should be able to, you, the rest of you guys should be able to flip that in two, three weeks, right, but if it's not even on a subcommittee, who knows what? You know, so.
Look at it now, or do we wait till?
I wait till, till we tell it's on a subcommittee, yeah.
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 Just because.
Don't waste your time.
Legal.
Yeah, cause you, trust me, you're not gonna.
Legal.
That's why.
The final draft has to be available to the public as of the date of the public notice. So it doesn't have to be today.
Right.
But it has to be, you know, and the notice has to be published and posted at least fifteen days before the public hearing.
And I would have, I would like these guys to look at it before we post it to the public, cause if there's anything, again, same thing, if there's something they catch, like the accessory building, great idea, let's make a change before the public sees it. Like you said, I think that's, let them look through it.
It was my understanding when we talked about this last, whenever in the, in December, that that was gonna be the process.
I just, I think we need to.
Are we waiting or does someone wanna make a motion to?
We don't have to make a motion.
Yes.
So it sounds like you're gonna wait on, you're gonna wait to schedule the public hearing until you have the final draft. Yeah, that's totally.
Yeah, it's all recycling, sure. I, I think in thirty days, if it's not a, a subcommittee, I'll, I'll put a time clock on it then, so that'll push us.
It's been tick tocking in my head.
I know it has, I know it has, but we're close on that subcommittee. And then again, I wanna give these guys at least, at least two weeks, if not more, to look at it.
But I, I think right now it's not fair to the subcommittee. I think we have discussed a ton of changes that we have not had come back to us as the final until just now. And I think the subcommittee needs to look at it to make sure all the things that we have discussed are in there.
Yeah.
And see if there's anything.
Anything we missed?
Yep.
Yeah.
I, I think that was the whole point of a subcommittee, was to try to clean things up before it came to the planning commission.
I think I agree. Any other comment on that?
No, no.
Okay, Article ten, acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak. Any on Zoom? No. Okay, Article eleven, um, one quick thing I'd like to bring up, um, while I encourage you guys to speak your minds, right, um, doing it on email with a bunch of people, we can get in trouble for that, right? So the, the, um, the whole thing, we can't have a quorum, right? So if we're out in the parking lot talking, that's fine, but if we're talking about something that's going on, we can't have a quorum. And a quorum is, you know, what, three?
Three.
Three.
Depends on how many.
Right, so just be careful.
In terms of.
Right, so, um, we can, the, uh, the open meetings, we can get in trouble for that.
Yep, you can't deliberate outside of.
Oh, yeah, you did make that up, but don't worry about it, it's fine. Well, actually, you were probably, okay, we just, we need to respond by saying, thank you for your opinion. And don't, like, I think the response should.
A lot of way, in terms of email, a lot of times the way we, uh, address that is either having the chair or zoning administrator as the head, like, the, the person navigating the email or sending the emails and then everyone else is B C C'd.
Yeah.
So you can't reply all and get into a situation where people are replying all, so the reply would only go to the chair or Andrea.
So like, I had a question, I can ask Andrea and then she will reply to me and blind copy everybody so everybody knows the question and the answer so that we know all have the same facts, but it's not deliberated.
Not a big deal. Just, just, we can get in trouble for that.
Gotcha.
So, um, that's why I, I, I recommend coming to the township board, talking to them, or just send a, want a single email to Grace. I mean, she's great.
So we gotta delete the group texts.
Ah, babe.
Personal, personal text messages, or text messages on your personal cell phones that relate to township business can be voided. So just keep that in mind, a little like that, but.
Glad I don't have any of your.
Nothing, it's just.
No, I know, I, I, yeah.
It was a joke, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a.
Sometimes people are, you would, you would be surprised some of the things that I have seen.
Oh, yeah. Right, sure.
When we respond to fire, not here, not, not Cascade Township.
Be careful what you send out on Cascade, right? Cause all that is public.
So is your private, if you choose to use it.
Right, so, that's all. Nope. Yeah, is anybody else have any other business?
No.
Sure.
All right, Article twelve, adjourn meeting.